Need to be. Not sure Doc Brown, John, do we have a quorum yet?
I'm counting up right now. I think we may be right at five board members, but.
Few more minutes?
Yeah, I think that would be wise.
Nicole's here. I mean, what else do we need besides Nicole?
Am I going to get a Desi fighting? That's what I'm looking for. Sometimes I pin your video just hoping that he will come by.
He only likes to come on to surprise people. Requested he does not.
I love it.
I do see the path on board, I believe, and she did have a time commitment.
And Chris Moore joined us as well, so we have a quorum, Rob.
So I suggest we go ahead and get started, and this is a very, a very special, regular, well, it is a regular voting meeting on a special day, and there's a special person with us, with Nicole. So, so we, we are in, we are to order, we have a quorum, and really for the agenda, we're mostly gonna go through the consent agenda, but we will, and anything Dr. Brown has to share. Tricia, there were no requests for public comments prior to, do we have any public comments that we need to address right now?
Hi, Rob. I'm, I'm looking in the chat, and I haven't received any emails. I am looking if there's raised hand as well.
Well, always happy to hear from the public. We will be meeting again soon in December, but this is a special shortened, shortened week. School's out tomorrow, I think, after tomorrow, right? So if there's no public comment, I've killed enough time, I believe, because I don't see any raised hands. So let's move on. Student reps, if you're out there, if you have anything to share with us, feel free to pipe, pipe in.
Hi. Sorry, one second.
Hi, Adam. Feel free to go.
Um. Okay. So, um, over the past two weeks, we've continued talking to students about, um, issues facing everyone right now with online and hybrid learning, and the more we talk to people, the more and more it's obvious that Chromebooks are just a huge, huge issue for students right now. So, the, the biggest problem with Chromebooks is that for online classroom, we need basically three basic things. We need to be able to have Google Meet open, we need to have Canvas open, and we need to have probably a Google Document open. With the Chromebooks, for most people, it's a pick two. You open the third, and the Chromebook crashes. If you're especially unlucky, it's pick one. And sometimes even just opening the chat is enough for everything to crash. Um, and that really, really makes it much, much harder for students to be productive in class and to be able to pay attention and learn. And so one idea that we have thought of to help students who are have, who are really struggling with their Chromebooks is creating a, a system in which students can request a second Chromebook, so that they may have one to use for Google Meet and the other to have documents in Canvas open on. Um, so, uh, over the past few days, we have surveyed people using our Instagram account. We've gotten about 100 responses. A little under half of responders said that their Chromebook was their primary device for school. And when asked how well it works during and for online class, on a scale of zero to five, the average response was just a little over one. It, it's really, really a big problem for students. And when, and when we asked people if having a second device would significantly improve their online class experience, 37%, 37% responded that yes, it would really help them. And furthermore, when we asked students who use their prime, who use a personal computer as their primary device, 80% of those said that they would be willing to return their Chromebook to the school so that it could be given to someone for whom it would really help to have a second device. So I think that this could definitely, it seems feasible to me. I, I, obviously, I don't know all the details behind the scenes. But that's just one suggestion that we have for helping people who, for whom technology is an issue right now.
Last Monday, we had the privilege of speaking with the, the IHS administration, and we were able to discuss more in depth our student survey results and some issues that we could work on with them. So we plan to continue meeting with them and consistently, as it would be a great opportunity to discuss problems at multiple levels and address problems that aren't district-wide, but more within the building and about building policy. So we would also try and bring back the process that we would make to the school board, especially if it could benefit the whole school district.
So I guess the next topic would be grading, especially since the first quarter has, has ended. A lot of the students had questions about how the grading will work this year. So this past week, we were personally contacted by a senior who had concerns about the grading system. The senior class had hosted a town hall, and they discussed the options of grading, and overwhelmingly, a lot of them wanted the pass/fail option, like from the spring semester, especially because we're still online. So we are still hoping to discuss this with the, and the IHS administration first. But we just wanted to let you know, and that we're very pleased that students are starting to reach out to us about their issues.
Yeah, so like Grace mentioned, the senior class had a meeting. So like class officers this year, it seems like they're doing a lot to try to reach out to their respective, like, classes. I've seen this through like a lot of emails, like Instagram posts, like for example, like the junior and sophomore classes, they had like an Among Us night, which is like a popular new game, which they all played together. And, but it can, and they also had like a bunch of town halls where they addressed, and they brought up issues where grading was one of the things at the senior class. Another thing there was like mental health days. So they had, they're coming with ideas that they feel like could help them. I think personally, I think that this is a great, like, way to help mental health, because getting to be in like these smaller communities is like maybe a club, giving me class, or even like these class officer, like spaces, for example, like the Wind Ensemble, which I'm a part of. They, we released like a, we sent out a virtual concert slash recording of a piece that we like recorded personally, and then we put all together. And it felt really gratifying to get to see like the final product of what we were working by ourselves. So I think that getting to work in like these smaller environments, whether it be more like collaborative, where you have like a bigger final result that's bigger than like what you do yourself, or like more just casual, where you can interact with people, less on like a school basis, less on like a formal basis, maybe in like clubs, discussing like club activities, that can be really helpful. Or something just like a combination of these, I feel like could be a helpful step in improving mental health.
And then some of the students had questions about the capital project, but they were wondering if there was a lot of money spent on the capital project. So they were wondering if, like, how that money was used, and if that money could have been gone into Chromebooks, but.
Um, or even if, I guess, the, the big question is, like, does the district right now have the money to spend on new tech for students? Like, I don't know, to, correct me if I'm wrong, but it seems like much of the capital project has like, a lot of that money's already been spent, and there's a plan for spending that over the next 10 years. Right? But I guess one of, one of the big questions is like, how much room for spending on things like Chromebooks and other technologies? Like, how, how much room for that does the district have?
Because recently, one of my classes started to use like an owl meeting device, I think. I saw it was pretty costly, so I was thinking if some of that money could go to other tech-like Chromebooks.
Great input, Eiffel High. Anything else before we go to board responses?
One thing, um, I, I, I kind of just want to make it clear that like, we're not asking for like a huge revamp of the Chromebook program. Like, obviously, a lot of people are, like, especially now that we're doing online, a lot of people are using personal computers and like revamping the whole Chromebook program for everyone would kind of, like, not help some people. And like, also, like, we're not asking for like the top-of-the-line things, but just right now, the Chromebooks that people are using are just like so dysfunctional in many ways that it would really benefit a large portion of the, of, of the student body to have access to, to an upgraded Chromebook that has a larger capacity for online learning.
Thanks, Anna, and, and thanks, everyone. Board responses, and there is, there's a lot of questions, but we can certainly address some.
I'll jump in. I'm sure other folks have. I'm sure other folks will have some additional responses as well. First, to our student reps, thank you. There is a hip-hop band that I reference every now and then called Rebel Diaz, who says that you just can't oppose, you have to propose. And so the suggestions, the ideas about how to move forward are greatly appreciated. So thank you very much for pushing us, not just asking us questions, but coming up with suggestions and ideas as well. And I'm sure we'll be asking some of our administrators to respond. I was just in a meeting the other day and having a conversation that it was probably about less than a year where we had caregivers and parents asking us, why do we have technology in school? And folks, board members may remember this, like literally telling us that we should take cellphones away from students when they walk in the building. And so obviously, this is pre-COVID, but to think about how we've gone from that moment where there is advocacy of taking away technology to an absolute dependence on technology is just, you know, some indication of how the year goes. We've also been hearing from students, I know I have, about Chromebooks as well, right? And so I think we understand that we have to do some, some different things as well. Two things. One, the budget process is a year-long process for us. So by the time COVID even hit, we had already set last year's budget. And so here we are now, hopefully, in a much better position to be thinking about how we allocate our resources. And that absolutely has to include technology, right? We're in a much different place than we were when we settled our, our last budget. The capital project money can only be used for capital projects. The way in which Educational Finance works in New York State, that money was voted on by the voters in the Eiffel City School District, and it's very rigid in terms of what that money can be spent on. I know I see Amanda Verba, our business officer, who can give a much clearer explanation than I can. But oftentimes with educational finance, certain monies can only be, be spent in certain ways, and that's above and beyond the capital project as well. So while we may look like we have $139 million budget, that doesn't mean that all that money can be used in different ways. And so we'll have to have a conversation again about how we move resources around to make sure that we are supporting not just students, but staff and faculty as well, in terms of the access to technology that they have as well. And so I love the idea about being innovative about secondary devices. I'm sure a number of us will be having conversations with Dr. Brown and the team about how we can help support students. And again, a number of students have said to me, right, that two or three applications open, and that, that's it, it's the end of it. So we'll, we'll have to do some work. So thank you again for the suggestions, and we'll keep trying to be innovative and, and using your ideas and borrowing your ideas. So I'm sure more to follow shortly.
Go ahead, Ann.
Yeah, again, I don't, I guess I'm gonna be redundant, but just thank you again for your insights, and I really, really appreciate the constructive ideas that you're putting forward. So I guess my question actually would be for staff. It seems like this pretty urgent problem. And so is anything in the CARES Act, is there any of that CARES Act that is applicable to additional Chromebooks? Or is there any way of kind of consolidating or getting, getting the Chromebooks, additional Chromebooks to the kids who need them at this time?
I think I may have spoken about this at our last meeting, and I need to stress to young people and everyone else, this is not a quick fix. This is a much more of a strategic conversation. We will need to make some strategic decisions as we go through our budget process about which device we will go for with, whether to be a Chromebook, a Dell laptop, and an Apple laptop, or what have you. Even if placing an order for, I mean, Chromebooks, every school district in the country is trying to get their hands on Chromebooks to put some out there at the same level we are doing right now. So I mean, we could order today, and we may not see those same devices for months. So I need to stress to folks, we have, we, it's, there's a sense of urgency, and there's, there's, there are a lot of things that need our attention right now, including this. But I would, I'm asking us to be very strategic in how we approach it and how we build to something new. A transition from our Chromebook to another device will take a significant amount of infrastructure work as well. So, and, and the Chromebooks we have are of high quality, and they're recent devices. So it's not as if we could go out and purchase a Chromebook with a significant amount, amount of processing power unlike what we have right now. So I hope this is making sense, this is rather, a rather technical conversation, and, and I'll look to our board officers, and maybe we have Zach Lynn and our technology team come in, and in addition to the memos we've shared and the guidance documents, just have a conversation about the state of technologies. From our perspective, it's not as dire as it may seem at times. It can be improved, and yes, we are stressing our tools and ways they were not designed to do. And we need to make some decisions about what we will move forward with. If this is going to be a bit of a new normal, if we're going to be expecting multiple tabs to be open, running video and working with Canvas and streaming in from an outside source, I mean, that's going to require us to shift from the direction we were going. Um, it's all possible, but it, it would require much more of a conversation than us going now and attempting to make a one-time purchase, which could have other issues associated with it.
Appreciate that, Dr. Brown, and we would hope to hear from Zach either the first meeting in December, or certainly, well, why not the first meeting? We also want to hear from the high school team as well regarding grading. They were going to come back and give us an update after they had some discussions in December as well. So we'll, we'll have, we'll have a busy December, but look forward to hearing from them soon. Other? From board members?
I just wanted to specify something. I think when we're talking about our Chromebooks being really finicky and difficult to use, we're not, we're not asking for the, the, the best, best thing that's out there. We understand that this is what we have, and we're going to try and work with it. I think when we're talking about reaching out to students and trying to find out what is working for them and what is not, some people can work with a Chromebook, and sometimes it works for them. But we're, when we're talking about getting new Chromebooks, we're getting new Chromebooks to help those that one Chromebook is not working for them. And they can't, they can't do their schoolwork efficiently with just one device, and they don't have another option of getting another device to sort of act as the buffer. So certainly, I think in the long run, it would be a good goal to look into newer devices that will serve students on a, like a greater platform. But right now, I think we understand that that is not an option, and we can't just order X amount of Chromebooks and, you know, have them the next day. So I think we're just looking into what we have now and how that can help our student body in the short term, because that's what we need.
I have another question on top of that. Are there, um, like, I don't know if you guys are the right people to ask, but are there Chromebooks in, like, that right now aren't being used? That could be distributed as second devices to people without even having to buy new devices first?
No.
And so in, in that case, is there, is there a way to put a system in place where students can return their Chromebooks? Students, students who are using only a personal device? And like, for I myself, I haven't touched my Chromebook since July. So, and I know that there are a lot of people like, like me, who are either fully online or even going in person and just using a personal device and don't need their Chromebook, who are willing to return theirs. Is there a way for, can, can we create a system where students can return their Chromebooks so that people who needed additional device can have one?
Adam, please don't mistake this comment as not understanding the dire necessity that some students are experiencing. One of the things that we will ask our central administrator to do is to connect with our Director of Technology to have that very conversation, to also be working with our building leaders to make sure that if there's a process, that that could be implemented sooner rather than later. And as Rob Ingsley said, to invite the Director of Technology to come to our next board meeting, so we can have a much more extended conversation about the nuances, right? I think that's the best thing. So I think as a board, we understand the, the urgency, if that makes sense. And we'll work with Dr. Brown and this toolkit and the Director of Technology to, to find whatever solution we can in the interim, knowing that, as Dr. Brown said, a long-term solution is going to be a little bit more nuanced and take longer conversations. But to the fact that we have leasing programs, right? So we're also talking about contracts, we're talking about significant amounts of money, but we, we understand the, the urgency of where we find ourselves.
And to piggyback on another thing, we are actually far ahead of a lot of other school districts by actually having devices. Several of our other neighbors are trying to get devices for the first time, so they're playing catch-up with us. And I'm not trying to be sarcastic in any way, shape, or form, they actually wish they had our problem. But what you raised are a lot of good questions that we need to get Zach involved in and have the dialogue and see what this looks like, see what the replenishment cycle is, what the service cycle as far as operating systems, is that even the right term anymore? So, but we definitely will follow up and let you know.
I, I want to thank you also. I mean, the problem-solving ideas you're throwing out are so appreciated. I just want to ask one more question for clarity. When you're talking about a second device, is, you're not just seeing a second monitor, you're talking about the, your fellow students' Chromebooks are so wonky, they need another one? Or are you talking about just the need for dual screens? I just want a little clarity on that.
Um, the need for a second device, um, it, the operating system on many Chromebooks crashes very quickly. And so if students had two Chromebooks, then they could use one for Google Meet. Because one, once the Chromebook uses Google Meet, it can do very little else without crashing. So a student, and from, from my experience, when you're not on Google Meet, the Chromebooks are perfectly fine for like most things until you have like 10-plus tabs. But once you have Google Meet, like, it's all off. So one Chromebook could be used for Google Meet, and then the other Chromebook could be used for documents and Canvas and stuff like that. And that way, they won't be overloading one device.
We're just really trying to work with what we have. Like, right now, I have my Chromebook with this Zoom meeting, and then I have another, another device, which I'm taking notes, that sort of thing. And it just works better.
I have a question. Thank you all for sharing your perspectives and experiences with us. A question I have, and this might be connected to a survey that you would send to students, but do you all feel that feel comfortable enough to share with their teachers that they're having these issues? So I'm thinking about the grading policy and the pass/fail that you all brought up in connecting those two things in regards to some students not being able to possibly complete work and feeling comfortable enough to reach out to their teachers to let them know that they're having these issues. And I also just wanted to talk about broadband in terms of like having three kids at home, and I'm, my kids, all three kids being on Chromebooks as well as me working from home, how hard it was for my internet to be able to handle that. So I know that we can all acknowledge that we have friends or family members who have access issues to Wi-Fi. So just thinking about if we were able to get a second Chromebook to students, if they would actually be able to use it in regards to the type of Wi-Fi that they have and the fact that we have a monopoly here with spectrum.
Other, other board?
Yeah, I just had a follow-up question. For the, you've been doing a lot of surveys with students, so one of the places to follow up with your idea, which I, I think makes sense in terms of finding out, is there a way you could find out how many students have Chromebooks that don't need them because they already have a laptop or other device already?
So we actually collected some data on this just yesterday. And I can give you numbers right now. So this is just a rather limited number of responses from our Instagram account. We got a little over 100 responses. When asked what they're, what they use for online class, and given the options of Chromebook, personal computer, and both, 50 students answered Chromebook, 64 students answered personal computer, and 21 answered both. And out of those 64 that answered personal computer, when asked if they would be willing to return their personal device, because they don't, or if, if asked if they would be willing to return their Chromebook because they don't need it, because they use a personal device, 80% of them, so 51 out of those 64, said that they would be happy to return theirs. So it seems to me that if that, that's a possibility, then many students would be happy to return their Chromebooks to create that supply.
Yeah, I think for me, that, that's a pretty creative solution. So I, I would be in the follow-up with Zach to see if we could follow up on that idea.
Pat, Moira, Eldred, anything that you wish to share or ask?
I just want to make it clear to the students that, how this bonding works. So, because you, you, that came up several times. I know, Adam, you mentioned it, I think Alexander, you mentioned it as well. Talk about in the most simple, simplistic terms I can, so we can really put that to bed. Money that we received, that we were able to the public and ask them to share with us so that we can rebuild your facilities, rebuild your tracts, rebuild, open into the building, secure those so people can't come in undetected. That money is for an extremely specific purpose. And we haven't spent most, there's $110 million bond. Amanda, give us an update on roughly where we're at, but we certainly haven't spent nearly all of it. But it also cannot be shifted legally to another purpose. That's what we ask the public to give us money for, for that. Dr. Brown said this is complicated stuff. The state has often had to go out to bond to get enough money to redress technological needs across a broad spectrum, because that's how expensive it is. Dr. Brown works magic in terms of our technology. I'm sure if we put our heads around this, and it's important enough, rises to the level of urgency, we could figure something out. But I just wanted to make it absolutely clear, the bond money is just not fungible in the way that you The bond money is just not fungible in the way that you are mentioning. And it is also not part of our budget. It is something that's completely set aside, uh, in a lockbox over there to do those things.
We, we completely understand that. I think that a lot of students who don't get the opportunity to hear it being explained like this, uh, kind of see that and are like, where'd they get all that money from? Um, so we'll definitely make sure to clarify to students that that money is coming from a different source and can only be used for that, uh, so that there isn't as much confusion about that.
Pat, do you want to win?
No, I, everything that I was going to say has already been covered. But, but again, thank you for taking the initiative to, to lead this forward. It's what we need.
Moira?
I just thank you very much. I'm really very impressed by and appreciative of your efforts. Um, it's, I think it's really making a difference and will continue to. Thanks.
Thanks, Moira. Um, anyone else right now? We, uh, we certainly know what we need to discuss at our next meeting. And, uh, so we'll take some time between now and then to gather, gather info and we'll, we'll talk more. Anything else right now regarding board responses? Thanks, everyone, for the conversation and the dialogue. Much appreciated. If not, then, uh, we'll just move on to the, uh, there it is, the consent agenda. It is short, but we do need to pass it tonight. We are, this is a voting meeting and so we will, uh, we will take a vote shortly. But, uh, consent agenda as presented.
I'll move the consent agenda.
Second?
Thanks. Moved by Moira, seconded by Pat. Any questions? Nothing earth shattering, but thanks to IPI yet again for contributions coming into the district for a few different items. But as always, it's seemingly on, on the agenda just about every month that there's, uh, grants and support coming in from IPI for, uh, classroom experience for kids. So we appreciate that once again. Um, if no questions, then, uh, Tricia, please go ahead and call the roll and we'll finish up the agenda.
Rob Ainsley?
Yes.
Erin Coriel?
Yes.
Sean Eversley-Bradwell?
Yes.
Eldred Harris?
Yes.
Nicole LaFave?
Yes.
Moira Lang?
Yes.
Chris Malcolm?
Yes.
Anne Reichlin?
Yes.
Patricia Wazel.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Thanks, Pat. And, uh, Dr. Brown, you are on the agenda.
Oh, wow. Well, thank you for the opportunity, Ms. Ainsley. It's great to see you all. Um, no major superintendent report, but, uh, maybe an announcement that leads us into the first agenda item, if that's okay. Um, well, uh, uh, another special, it, it's always a special blessing to have our young people in our spaces each and every day. And, uh, seeing what's happening across our region and the state and our country right now. Whenever we have an opportunity to engage with young people in person, um, it's a beautiful thing. So thank you, everyone, for doing what it needs to, what needs to be done for that to happen. Um, the announcement that I wanted to share with the board, um, the National Association for Black School Educators, um, it's an amazing organization. I've been a part of it, uh, going on twenty-two years now. Uh, and I've had the great pleasure of being at their national conference and their regional conference. And I'm looking at the screen and many folks on the screen have had an opportunity to attend their events as well. Um, I had the great honor and privilege of being invited to be the keynote speaker to kick the event off this year. And, um, yeah, it was surprising, but, um, a great honor for myself and our community to be able to represent our thinking on that national or international stage. Um, that event will be on, well, the event is November, uh, December the third through the sixth. Um, I'm going to be opening up the conference on the fourth, that morning, that Friday morning. Um, I believe it's at nine AM. But anyway, um, that's going to happen and it's virtual, obviously. Uh, the first time they've done a virtual event. And it would, um, be amazing if some board members and others on my team would join us in that conversation. Again, we'll be sharing the highlights of our work, including how we wrote our technology initiatives, some lessons learned, the bumps in the road. And hopefully we will inspire some folks, uh, to join us on this special journey that we're on. Anyway, um, that's my superintendent report. I know that sort of transitions, transitions us into the next item. Um, if there are some board members who wish to, um, join in virtually for that opportunity, um, I would be most thankful and appreciative.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. And just, uh, uh, just to clarify, board members can, can choose to, uh, join in for the, the whole, um, slate of, uh, events. Uh, that does have a cost with it. Uh, if we just, as with some of your other presentations, just want to hear the keynote, would there be a link to that or do we have to?
Yes, sir. Uh, yes, uh, we will give a link to board members who wish to join in just for the opening keynote.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. I, I thought that was the answer, but, uh, yeah. But, uh, so really opening up anyone, um, we had, uh, Anne and Pat, I believe, um, did the, um, that state school boards convention and attended in that way. Uh, and actually it was quite, um, quite worthwhile to do so. And so leave it open if anyone wants to, uh, participate in the convention that Dr. Brown is going to speak. Uh, I would like to attend. The point is there is a resolution. We, the board does have to vote on, um, the expenditure to, uh, cover the fee. So Sean, thank you. Uh, anyone else?
raising my hand for this one, definitely. What I'm curious about is I've seen a lot of, um, information invites to, um, uh, conversations about this topic, Dr. Brown, conversations about the work that we've done moving this ball forward in terms of, uh, including a lot of our kids and letting them be centered. Maybe for the first time in their lives in school. What I haven't seen as much about is how that work demands a different approach, a different accountability, different tools in this weird damn new environment we're in. I haven't seen many speakers make that shift. So I'm curious sort of about this conference, especially because it's a national one by black educators, is taking that into account. Um, are you aware, are they trying to make that shift? Not just how we do right by Brown kids, but how we do right by Brown kids. Um, as Sean always says, in a new way after trying to teach one way for 200 years.
Uh, no, sir. I have not looked, uh, frankly, I have not looked at the, the program, uh, will now. Um, but I also know that, uh, we open up and we set the tenor for the event. So I will maybe lean on your speech writing capabilities and talents to help me frame my 60 minutes of conversation. And maybe we talk about this, um, at the beginning of the event, which will then inform other conversations, I hope. I haven't begun to think about what I'm going to talk about, so I could use your help. I think Ms. LaFave says, did you try to get into Nicole? Yeah, it's awesome.
Yes, I said I would like to attend.
Moira, anyone else?
I, I mean, I'm thinking I'd like to attend, but, um, you know, I'm looking at the flyer. I don't see any link actually to the program, uh, you know, uh, so, uh, I'm not quite sure, uh, what, you know, what, what's being offered now. Uh, it's on December fourth and fifth, so it's Friday. Well, there's something on the December third, but that, uh, um, is not educational set sessions. But, um, on the fourth and the fifth, which is a Friday and Saturday, our keynotes, workshops, panel discussions. Um, so.
Yeah, I don't have any more information. Do you have?
Yeah.
But that's all I have. Um, I'll reach out to the folks tomorrow to see if they're further along with their development of the program.
Like Dr. Brown, I've also been a NAPSC member. Um, what I can say is that this is a conference of thousands of, um, traditionally black educators. And so there are workshops on almost everything that you can possibly imagine. This is a national conference. It's not a regional conference. And it usually attracts the, some of the best and brightest minds in the field of education trying to do work. So, um, there is a link on, at least on the, what's taking place. But I'm sure we can get a detailed catalog of what they've done previously. And I can share some other previous, um, conference programs for folks who are interested.
Well, I think I'd like to attend.
I, that I could, I have too much work associated with my day job, but I will do my absolute best to, uh, attend your keynote speech, Dr. Brown.
Uh, I would like to attend as well. I'm not sure I could participate, well, view everything, but I'll definitely be there for you, Dr. Brown.
I appreciate that, Chris. And just, uh, and obviously attending virtually is far less costly uh, than going to Las Vegas, Dr. Brown, or other area, other destination convention spots. So, um, so feel free, um, tune in to, uh, to as much as you can. We really just need a number, numbered and eventually names for Tricia. Uh, so we are in compliance and in good order when we, um, well, Tricia does what she has to do, meaning keep us on the straight and narrow. So, um, so I think, uh, Tricia, I think we have the names and, um, and the na, and the number, and we just need, um, a motion on a, the resolution. And, um, we'll be, be all set. From anyone? I move the resolution for the board to approve the attendance, uh, for the National Alliance of Black School Educators Conference virtually. And I believe that there were four names. Mr. Malcolm, I don't know if you were talking about attending the keynote or attending the conference.
Both.
So what I heard was, uh, Nicole LaFave, Eldred Harris, Chris Malcolm, Moira Lang and Sean Eversley-Bradwell. Adam, you good?
I second that.
Okay, thanks, Pat. Moved, seconded. Uh, Tricia, please call the roll.
Sure. Rob Ainsley?
Yes.
Erin Coriel?
Yes.
Sean Eversley-Bradwell?
Yes.
Eldred Harris?
Yes.
Nicole LaFave?
Yes.
Moira Lang?
Yeah.
Chris Malcolm?
Yes.
Anne Reichlin?
Yes.
Pat Wazel?
Yes.
Very good. Thanks, everyone. And, uh, look forward to, uh, for me, the keynote and, um, and hope everyone, uh, we expect, uh, to hear more, uh, about the conference when that is, uh, all wrapped up. And anything else, Dr. Brown, members, anyone right now?
Thank you. I appreciate your support.
Oh, thanks, Dr. Brown. And, um, upcoming dates of importance, uh, I guess that's probably Thursday. So, uh, Thanksgiving, it's, uh, for many of us, it's our favorite holiday, but it's going to be pretty quiet. But, uh, be safe, be well, uh, enjoy the day. Um, I'm, I'm gonna work. I actually wore a tie today, so I'm, uh, I'm anti-COVID. I'm back to wearing a tie. I'm enough of this casual stuff, Dr. Brown. Uh, it's time to get back to work, right? So, uh, no, it's, uh, enjoy the day, everybody. Uh, be with family as much as you can and enjoy, appreciate all the opportunities that we have and, uh, and we have many. And so, uh, thanks, everybody. And Nicole, uh, love the, uh, love the friends you have with you. Anything else, everybody? Thanks. Have a great week. We'll see you all soon.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Happy holidays. Be safe. Make the right decision.